Hugely warm welcome to everyone who's joined us, wherever you may be. It's a huge pleasure to do this special session. And we've got with us tonight John Cook, who's down under, starting our session with us at the crack of dawn down in Australia. But John, thank you so much again for joining us. Tonight's session, what are we going to be looking at? Well, broadly looking at what happens when you bring together inoculation theory, critical thinking, climate science and digital tools. And I guess I should have added in that as well, games based learning and cartoons as well. So quite a bringing together of a whole lot of elements here. Huge pleasure to have John Cook with us. As I await the superb biography, which will hopefully come up. Here we go. So John is a postdoctoral research fellow and he's based at the Climate Change Communication Research Hub at Manas University down in Australia. The focus of John's work is to use critical thinking to build resilience against misinformation. He is the founder of Skeptical Science website. He founded this in 2007. And this website gained the following award, the Australia Museum Eureka Prize for Advancement of Climate Change Knowledge. He's the author of Cranky Uncle versus Climate Change superb book. And the book actually forms the basis, or let's say it has a further manifestation of the superb app Cranky Uncle, which John kindly gave us a particular code to access and which you can access from the Coles platform. And as well as doing all of this activity, John also undertakes some advisory activities for organisations such as Facebook and NASA in terms of how they are communicating. So, John, I guess we can get underway. Now I've introduced you in this sort of third person manner. We were talking in this arena of climate change, climate emergency, shared global crisis, quite the context we're in, given that COP26 has just happened. And at the same time, we're in this context where we're more and more aware of the deluge of information, the access to information and the lack of friction in terms of disseminating it. So we'd love to start out really by thinking about the broader context within which we're working.
Yeah, thanks very much, Emma, for the invitation to talk to you and your group. I'm really happy to be here. So, um, yeah, it's a really curious time at the moment, isn't it? Like COP was a really intense period for people like myself, working in climate change and climate communication. And how you feel about a time like now probably depends on whether you're a half glass, half full or a glass half empty kind of person, because there is a lot of people working really hard to try to get progress on climate change. But there's also a lot of misinformation out there at the same time. And there's a lot of efforts, vigorous efforts to slow climate progress and try to delay climate action as much as possible. And so, um, so I tend to be, well, I don't know, I'm kind of toggling between optimism and pessimism at the moment because we face such a big challenge. But I guess really the important thing is every little bit of progress now will reduce the amount of impacts that we'll experience down the track. And that's really what gets me out of bed every morning is just working to just try to get any little bit of progress. And the more of us that are all contributing to that, the further along we'll get.
Yeah, no, that's superb. And I guess at this point it's worth thinking about some of those labels. So you were talking about misinformation and we, I guess, when we're more accustomed to hearing about fake news. So what is that difference between misinformation and disinformation and then fact and fiction?
Yeah, so, um, well, fake news tends to refer to article, like misinformation that parades itself as actual news. And like the famous example where the Macedonian teenagers that were just putting up these news articles that were just made up, really emotive headlines just to get clicks. And so, so that's a particular subset of misinformation, which more broadly misinformation is anything, any, any information that's, that's false. People usually receive it thinking it's true, but it turns out to be not based on reality. And then disinformation is another subset of misinformation. Disinformation is false information intentionally designed to deceive people. So misinformation might arise because people genuinely believe it or it could be intentional deception. But disinformation is specifically designed to mislead people.
Is there a sense when we're talking about climate that I imagine, you know, we see misinformation every day on Facebook feeds and Twitter, et cetera. But I guess there's a significant proportion of the information that's put out that is a false that can be countered with hard scientific evidence that is disinformation.
Sorry, what was your?
Is there a portion that, have you seen in your work that there's a significant amount of the poor information that goes out? That's actually willingly looking to mislead?
That's a really good question because the challenge with teasing out the difference between misinformation and disinformation is you kind of have to know what the motives were, what was the intent of the person promoting it. And we can't know what a person is thinking. And misinformation uses specific techniques and we'll get into those later on. Techniques like cherry picking or using fake experts. And the challenge is if we all have cognitive biases or psychological biases. And these biases can lead to these types of techniques. For example, confirmation bias makes us gravitate towards evidence that confirms our beliefs. That makes us cherry pick data. So the cherry picking technique can arise just from personal biases. Or it might arise from someone intentionally cherry picking data in order to strategically trick people. So misinformation looks just the same as disinformation because they use the same techniques. That's why I tend to concentrate on or use the term misinformation more than disinformation. I tend to be agnostic about what a person's motives and focus on the techniques.
That's really interesting. It just occurred to me as we were talking about, because I guess, you know, you have certain sectors that, let's say, that have an agenda. And I guess the parallel example would be the tobacco industry and banning of cigarettes. So if you've got an agenda, so that's really interesting. But as you say, you know, often you can't unearth the motives. And actually, the important point is to focus on the information itself. And I guess we started talking a bit about these dualities and unpicking them. And that brings us on to this question of critical thinking, meeting and inoculation theory. So we've already, I guess, started to underline just how much information there is, whether it's misinformation or disinformation. We talk a lot about at the same time that the 21st century education should be critical thinking. What does critical thinking in terms of your work and how you're approaching it? How do you see it as defined and what do we mean by inoculation theory and how does that work with them?
Yeah, critical thinking is a very broad umbrella and it really encompasses every aspect of life. You know, how we, how we think through making decisions, life decisions and so on. So I look at a very small part of critical thinking, which is building our resilience against misinformation and, and being inoculated against being misled. And there's a branch of psychological research called inoculation theory, which has been around since the 1950s. And it basically takes this idea of vaccination and applies it to knowledge. In vaccination, you expose people to a weakened form of a virus. That analogy is kind of broken down with mRNA vaccines, but never mind that. You expose people to a weakened form of a virus and that builds up their immunity. So that when they encounter the actual virus, they're less likely to be misled. With inoculation theory, you expose people to a weakened form of the misinformation. And that builds up their cognitive immunity. So when they encounter actual misinformation, they're less likely to be misled. So what do I mean by a weakened form of misinformation? Generally, it means explaining the ways that the misinformation misleads people. When people understand the techniques used to mislead, when they can spot those techniques that gives them immunity, like that they're able to spot those techniques and they're less likely to be misled. And so spotting the, the argumentation fallacies, the rhetorical techniques of misinformation, that is basically critical thinking. It's, it's being able to understand arguments and understand the way that arguments can be structured to mislead. And really just spotting those telltale red flags of, of a misinformation technique.
Right. And so it started in the 1950s, so it's been around for a long time. What's, what has made it sort of gather pace? Because you now, you hear the metaphor more readily, I guess now. Was there a trigger that, that brought it sort of more to the forefront?
I think that misinformation as a societal issue and as a research focus kind of exploded in 2016. It was really the US election because I think misinformation sources kind of tweaked or figured out a way to weaponize it during the US election. Using social media, micro-targeting, particular target audiences. And we're really effective in using this information to, to influence people's voting behaviour. And then that kind of light bulb went off and misinformation sources all around the world, hey, wow, that worked there, we can do that as well. And so you saw this explosion of misinformation. And it's not just confusing people about climate change or, you know, other health issues or, you know, other scientific issues. It was democracy itself was under threat. So that led to then the explosion of misinformation led to an explosion of researching to how do we understand and counter misinformation? And inoculation theory really rose in prominence as, as an effective strategy to, to try to counter its influence.
Right. And then in the UK, we had the Brexit vote. So another part of our political tapestry that amply.
Well, I guess Brexit was the, it was the forerunner to the 2016 election, actually, sorry.
Yeah, I know. It was quite, yeah, you're quite right. It was quite a year.
It was, and I was living in the US at the time and we were watching Brexit with dismay because it was these really false talking points of the bus with misleading statistic and all those kind of things. And, and we were thinking, okay, that happened, but we mustn't let that happen in the US with the election. And exactly the same thing happened and, um, yeah. And then things just seemed to get, and then the pandemic happened and then we had another surge of misinformation.
Right. And I find it really curious in a, in a previous life, I would say, the previous chapter I was in literary criticism and for me, I found moving into critical literacy and turning it around is that we've always had, there's always been information warfare, I guess. There's always been a sense in which words have huge power to wield control over large numbers of people. And with the power of print, for example, that was a, you know, a huge moment, I guess, in terms of that, that shift in how you can use information to control and of course rising in literacy rates as well. But as you say, I think it is, it's certainly much more on the radar, isn't it? And of course we've had the extreme experience of the pandemic and all of the different shades of information about the origins of the virus and, and the, and the spread in queues, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess that then brings us to the different ways in which we inoculate. So there's two sides of inoculation theory and it would be great to hear a bit more about those, those two versions.
Are you referring to active and passive?
I was trying to, I was trying to refer to it without saying it. So thank you for being telepathically with me, John.
Yeah, well, the other way of organising inoculation is logic based and fact based.
Right, right, right. It'd be great. Let's, let's explore both. So perhaps we can start with the active and passive.
Yeah, so most of the research into inoculation is looking at passive inoculation, which is where you are communicating inoculating messages and your audience is passively receiving it. So it's one way of communication. You're explaining here is a misleading technique or here is, here is how this misinformation, you know, distorts the facts. But it's passive, it's one way. Active inoculation makes it a more of an interactive two-way process where you're communicating information, but you're also having the recipients interacting with the content in some way. And games are a really powerful way of doing that, where you can have them actually interacting with the game. But another way, which is really cool, is what more universally, active inoculation is often powerful if you get the person who's being inoculated actively generating the misinformation as a way to better understand it. For example, I, um, there's, there's people, well, it's actually a professor in Massachusetts, Melanie Tressett King. And she designed this really cool assignment in her critical thinking class where she has the students write an essay on why they shouldn't fail despite not studying. And they have to use as many fallacies as possible in their email to the professor saying, here is why you shouldn't fail me. And then, and they have to practise employing fallacies. But the point of it is to teach them how to spot fallacies because doing it is one of the most powerful ways of being able to spot it.
Right, right. I, I thought that was an excellent moment in that, in your paper where you print that the example of the student saying why he shouldn't fail. It's, it's very, very amusing. And I guess then we've touched on thinking, when we've been thinking about active versus passive inoculation. And the broader two parts, we know that have huge pedagogical power, which is an active learning. But what we actually mean by active learning, and that's something we've been discussing as part of the programme, is not thinking that physical activity is necessarily active learning, but the cognitive exertion, as you were explaining, John. And then that generation effect, and again, that's something we've been talking about in terms of a critical creative cycle, where you go through those stages of evaluation and reflection and then get to a point where you're creating something. So taking a, producing something, which is when you're enacting, which is, which is so important. And then you're also talking about the difference between fact based and logic based, which I think is a good moment in fact to, for us to move on to the next slide as we start talking about logic based inoculation versus the fact based. So it'd be super to hear more about that and the taxonomy that you've brought together.
Yeah, so fact based inoculation is explaining how the misinformation is wrong through a factual explanation. If it's a myth about the greenhouse effects and climate change, then explain how the greenhouse effect works. And then that helps people to see how the myth is, is out of sync with the facts. Whereas logic based explains the fallacies or the rhetorical techniques used in the misinformation. The power of the logic base, well, one of the, I guess, advantages of the logic based approach. And I'm not saying only use one or the other, I think using both in combination is, is ideal. But what our data and other people's data show is that with logic based inoculation, you're explaining techniques used to mislead. And we see these techniques across different issues. You will see these, these techniques of fake experts and logical fallacies and impossible expectations. The tobacco industry used them back in the mid 20th century to, to misinform people about the health impacts of smoking. Climate misinformation started using these techniques in the early 1990s onwards. In 2020, we saw COVID misinformation using all those same techniques. And our data and others have found that when you learn these techniques in one area, it helps you spot them in another area. So inoculating people against climate misinformation can help them spot COVID misinformation or vice versa. So it's, it's a more universal vaccine against misinformation.
That's so powerful because I guess that then highlights this ongoing thorny question of transferability of understanding a knowledge. And I guess sometimes we talk about domain knowledge or procedural knowledge. And there's that bigger debate about whether we should be teaching Latin in schools, for example, of what's the utility? And does playing a musical instrument help you become creative? So it feels this really sort of highlights what it looks like to develop a procedural knowledge and an ability to think critically and then transfer it across into different disciplines.
Yeah, that's right. The transferability, I think, is one of the biggest advantages of the logic based approach. And, and I think that content knowledge is still important, like certainly it helps. And I've been collaborating with some people on developing responses to misinformation about lead ammunition, which is not just a US problem, but it's also a Europe, European problem. Apparently there's a hunting community that favour lead ammunition, which is bad for a number of reasons. And there's a lot of misinformation to cast out on these negative impacts. And we're going through this process of applying this critical thinking lens to all the different myths. But I have, have found that relying on the content knowledge of, of the people working in the area is important. I can just come fresh to a topic that I know nothing about and just instantly spot the fallacies. So that's why I think fact based is important, like explaining the facts is crucial. But also understanding how misinformation can be distorted, understanding those fallacies and the logic based approach in concert, I think, is the best, is the best mix.
Right. And I guess that brings us back to another debate, which is that, that, that knowledge versus skills debate. That we seem to go in circles about and you seem to have two camps often set up and opposing one another. But as you say, you know, we, you need both. How can you be critical about something you know nothing about? And it makes me think, which is it got a relevance if we're talking about climate change and the climate crisis. Daisy Cristodoulou in her, in her work talks about teaching a GCSE English class. And they're trying to unpick a text and it talks about a gla- a glacier. And half of her 16 year olds didn't know what a glacier was. So how can you possibly talk about an author's rhetorical skills if you, there's a key bit of terminology or knowledge that's embedded in a piece of information, whether it's presented in a more literary setting or, or another space? You can't possibly be critical if you don't know what's, what's there.
It sounds like the kind of debates. I was just kind of just reflecting.
Yeah, yeah, please do.
It sounds like the kind of debates that you have in education are similar to the debates that we have in the communication discipline, which often they kind of devolve into these simplistic false dichotomies. It's this approach or it's this approach, when usually a holistic combination is, is more robust.
That's really, that's really interesting. Yes, I find it across, it seems in education or, I guess, in lots of disciplines, we're all fighting the same thing. That, that precise thing, you know, that false dichotomy. And I always, I always think of that fact versus fiction. I mean, coming from cultural history and literary criticism, it's really hard to think of any text as just a piece of fact or fiction. For me, with my, I guess, those hats on, but it is, it is really interesting, I guess, how those parallels are so quickly set up and then they just become entrenched. But I guess that, you know, we like patterns, don't we? We've evolved to, to like patterns and, and labels, which actually brings me back to your, the flick and the taxonomy that you have. And that was something that I, I'd love to explore further is at what point does having labels and categorization, is it, I guess, is there a danger that we start to falsely categorize or have you found with developing this taxonomy? That it really does, it, it helps so much to help, to start labelling examples that even if it's hard to apply a certain category, you know, even just having the category there to start off with helps.
Doing a taxonomy of fallacies is a bit like democracy. It's flawed, but it's the best, it's the best model we have. Like it's, it's not ideal and I've looked for better ways of doing this, but this is the best I can come up with or the best that I could find. So it is hard because fallacies, informal fallacies, which is what these are, fuzzy and messy and they kind of overlap. And I've been grappling with, for example, the fallacy of oversimplification, which is one of the orange and a logical fallacy. There's a big overlap between oversimplification and cherry picking because often it's just looking at one part of a system and ignoring the other complexities of the system. And are they cherry picking or are they oversimplifying? It's, it's not clear. I still haven't kind of resolved it in my head as, as conceptually. And I, and I don't know if it is possible to. So it's, it's, this is messy, but it's another, like in climate change, they say all models, what is it? All models are wrong but useful or something like that. So every model is a simplification, but it provides insights. And that's what this is. It's, it's a simplification of how fallacies and rhetorical techniques can be organised. But it's very useful in just making sense of it because critical thinking is like learning a language. And you need that vocabulary to be able to, to, you need those labels to, to encapsulate these concepts. The concept of a false dichotomy, you need to understand this either or kind of thing. And so learning the vocabulary helps you to be able to just make sense of all the different concepts and the types of arguments that are out there.
Right. And I think the analogy of a language is a really powerful one. I'm looking out of the corner of my eye at a French grammar book and it's, it's at that moment where you're taught all the rules of language and actually you realise, you know, language is organic, you know, that there, it's a starting point, it's a guiding, it's a rudder, but it's never your definitive answer to how language functions. And I guess, you know, here we've got the same things, haven't we, but with concepts and ideas. So from logic based, then we've got the power of the taxonomy behind us. And a really important part of all of this, we've been talking about very serious subjects. But there's a really important element in your work, which is humour. And again, a, a topic that much ink has been spilled over in terms of its educative value. So it'd be great to hear, John, where you're coming from with humour and what, what does the evidence tell us about its efficacy?
While I was doing some critical thinking work with some philosophers at the University of Queensland, they were explaining these different ways that you can explain fallacies and, and bad logic. And they introduced me to the concept of parallel argumentation, which is basically analogies, using analogies to explain logic. In other words, you take the bad logic in some misinformation and you transplant it into a parallel situation to make the logic more obvious. And I realised when they were explaining this to me, that that was what late night comedians do every night when they're debunking the, whatever ridiculous thing some public figure said that day. You know, the structure they often take is this person said this, well, that's just like being in this situation. And, and then using the same logic. And everyone laughs, they immediately see how silly the logic of the original argument is. And you can all, the, the power of that, that's a logic based approach. It, it can help almost sidestep having to explain all the background information, just working at that logic level. So again, facts and logic combined are the best. But that's another power of the logic based approach is you can show how an argument is misleading just on a purely logical level without having to delve into. just on a purely logical level without having to delve into the all the all the factual explanation. And the other power of this approach is um it allows you to take abstract logic and make it more concrete and relatable. You can often use everyday examples. Um but prior to being a scientist, I was a cartoonist. And I realized pretty quickly that cartoons were a perfect delivery mechanism for this uh type of debunking approach. And so I started experimenting with using cartoons and humor to explain the bad logic in misinformation. And we found a lot of really powerful benefits of the humor-based approach. Firstly, it held people's attention longer. And doing our statistical analysis, we found that that greater attention mediated or was the mechanism by which we were able to debunk the misinformation. Um people were more likely to share it, comment on it, engage with it. It's more likely to go viral. And and our latest data shows this interesting effect. Uh it sparks people's curiosity. Um it makes them want to seek seek out information more. Uh and so there's just a a range of different effects um or benefits of of the humor-based approach to countering misinformation.
Right. And it means, I guess, it especially in your work, it makes it very, very memorable. It gives that stickiness in a good sense. I guess we often talk about stickiness and new tools. Facebook's very sticky, but maybe not for the right ways. But the the way in which those um memories are formed and it engages people in topics that are, it it's, you know, it it's a life-threatening topic, isn't it? It's an existential crisis in many ways. And I guess that's another part of this, is how do you see the role of humor, especially when you're attacking this topic for a younger audience for whom it could be really quite worrying if you're a seven-year-old being told that the planet's about to burn up and 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 go.
Yeah, that I mean, that was another benefit that earlier research has found with humor is that the humorous approach can make an intimidating topic like climate change more accessible. So people find, particularly people who are disengaged from the issue of climate change. It it it's a it's a bridge to those people to interest them in climate messages. But I I the research also finds often every benefit of humor comes with a flip side, a kind of a downside. And the downside of that aspect is while it makes climate change more accessible and less intimidating, people can also come away less concerned about the issue compared to a serious um message. So you need to, when in all my um work, when I'm trying to design content, I try to reap the benefits and avoid the the negative impacts. So for example, if I'm using humor, I will try to use the humor to engage them, but also uh communicate the seriousness of the issue as well. So I don't inadvertently um get that negative impact as well.
Right. And 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 that was going to be, you you preempted my next query, John, which is great, which it it is that sense, is it? It it's that humor. Often we talk about comedy and humor being a cathartic process, a cleansing process where where uh you know, whether it's humor about mortality or it tends to be, you know, even some of the darker subjects that we have or the more challenging, shall we say, subjects in society. And I guess that's the the balance to be struck, isn't it? Is that there's the catharsis of not being so riddled by the concern that you you know, you end up being a rabbit in headlights, but it it playing that positive engagement sticky role. And and from humor, and we've already started exploring this, the examples and um analogies uh talking about the climate crisis. And before we move on to uh the cranky uncle work proper, it'd be great to expand a little bit more on the the use of examples and analogies. And I guess start to uh explore when an example is appropriate and when an or an analogy and when it becomes inappropriate and 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 how you found that as you've been developing and trying to source and and write all of the analogies.
Yeah, so firstly, examples are interesting because um making in in order to make the concepts that we're trying to communicate more sticky, we um you want to make it concrete, you want to make it real, uh rather than just speaking at the abstract level. And examples are a powerful way of doing that. But then the challenge is you don't want to use, like, there's a fine line between using an example and cherry picking. Like cherry picking is um is using real examples that dislead people. Uh but there's a a clear definition to distinguish between appropriate examples and cherry picking. Cherry picking is when the example you use leads to a conclusion that's different to the conclusion if you're looking at all the evidence. So for example, you mentioned glaciers before. Um if you if your example of a glacier was a glacier in New Zealand that's growing because of whatever weird weird local conditions are going on and say, look, here's a glowing glowing glacier, global warming isn't a problem. That's out of sync with what's happening globally, where when you look at all the glaciers in the world, they're shrinking at an accelerating rate. And it's uh it's it's a serious threat, because there are parts of the world where um you know, people's millions of people rely on the drinking water from melting glaciers every year. Uh so picking an example that is out of sync with the the big picture is cherry picking. But if you pick an example of a glacier that is shrinking, um that it can be a really concrete tangible way of communicating the reality of global warming. And it's a single example, but it's consistent with the overall picture. So um so so yes, I think examples are important to use. Um and then because they make it concrete and sticky, um but it needs to be done carefully. And and ideally, what I try to do is I will say, here is the big picture. And then here is an example to illustrate it as a way to kind of have my cake and eat it too. Like be able to communicate a robust scientific explanation, but also a effective communication as well. As for analogies, usually analogies are used to explain um facts and concepts. Like like uh you you know, using the idea of the spinning planet analogy to explain how an atom is structured. So it's explaining like physical phenomena in the world. Uh but what I've really um become fascinated by is also using analogies to explain logic. And it has all the same kinds of benefits, taking abstract ideas and making them concrete, um using everyday relatable um analogies to to um be more accessible to people. And also not having to um like rebuild a concept in people's minds. Instead, you're borrowing all their existing concepts that are in their minds. Um you're basically piggybacking or plagiarizing what people already know in order to explain new concepts. So it's much more efficient than just starting from scratch.
Yeah, and I guess the analogy, just as you were talking through it, it it is a way of countering the myths that often counter or circulate around climate change and other other topics, which are another way of trying to describe phenomena but without that concreteness that we that we were just uh talking about. Now, I I think evidence, John, of the the rich um pedagogical puzzle that sits behind Cranky Uncle, we we I've I've managed to get us through a big chunk of time talking about all these different elements. So without further ado, we should move uh straight on to Cranky Uncle. Uh it would be great to hear more about the genesis of this. And we were just discussing before we started out, I was trying to pinpoint the 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 chronology. So we you've got the book that came out um last year, right? And the app that that followed, uh where where did this uh how long in the making was was the book? And then what happened to bring together the app?
I started the book in in earnest at the start of twenty eighteen, I think. Um I had six months uh in the US where my family was still in Australia and I was by myself. So I just basically locked myself in a room and day, night, weekends, just smashed out this book, um which nearly killed me. My eyesight was like gone by the end because I was hunched over paper and drawing all these little cartoons. But um uh and it it really, the the genesis of it was really um that moment I described earlier, the the realization that parallel argumentation um um was a really powerful way to inoculate people and cartoons were the perfect delivery mechanism. So the goal of the book was really um to inoculate the public uh in inoculate readers against the most common myths about climate change using analogies. Uh and well, as well as explain all the science of climate change using analogies. So it's basically just wall-to-wall cartoon analogies, explaining the physics, explaining the greenhouse effect, the carbon cycle, but then also explaining all the fallacies that the that are used in climate myths as well. And um yeah, it's it was a real challenge to write because I you had to be a scientist, then a comedy writer, you know, like a cartoonist and writing humor and constantly switching gears. It was it was kind of like if you were in a car race where you had to do it do it in reverse for a few minutes and then switch around and go forward and then just keep doing that over and over again. Uh because you're using completely different brain muscles, writing humor, coming up with all these funny analogies and and jokes and then switching over to how do I explain the amplification of water vapor greenhouse effect in one paragraph? And you're trying to um do these really complex science explanations and then switch back into, all right, I've got my one paragraph explanation, now how do I do a funny joke about?
And draw it as well.
What's that?
And draw it as well, not just the words, the visuals and everything.
Yeah, well, the drawing is kind of the easy part in a way, because it's it's really the coming up with the ideas is is the most challenging aspect. Um but but the drawing, of course, was important because I wanted every page to be visually um welcoming. I didn't want it to be rivers of text that would intimidate people. I tried to have as as little text as possible and instead just have these rivers of color uh to the point where when I sent it to my dad, uh who sent me the book um and I I sent it from the US all the way to Australia. And when he finally got it, I said, well, what did you think? And his feedback was, it's very colorful. That's all I got.
Six months of blood, sweat and toil, that's what happens. It's very colorful, that's super. And and then, and so the book came first. And then what what got you thinking about doing a digital tool? And that that's certainly something that we've been really looking to unpick the the past four weeks or so. It is what happens when you take an educational resource that is your so-called analog conventional resource and then think about the power of digital technologies to uh either uh substitute or meant modify or redefine as we were talking about that summer uh model.
After the book was finished, I I think at the end of twenty eighteen, I sent the manuscript off to the publisher. And it was, you know, after a very intense period, you're you the immediate thought is, well, what next? And um we were, I my wife and I were talking about um doing a children's book and um maybe doing an app to go with it. And so I thought, just to practice that development, I should just try a really simple Cranky Uncle app that was just the content, like just basically a passive inoculation thing, just explaining the fallacies that are in the game. But the more I thought about it and developed it, the more I realized that this active inoculation approach perfectly suited uh Cranky Uncle. It was a hell of a lot more work, but um yeah, once that idea uh seemed it's planted, it was hard to ignore. Uh but once I started developing it, I realized then I was way out of my depth. This this kind of complexity was was beyond me unless I could find an infinite hour number of hours in the day that I didn't have. So um that's where I just through serendipity, I met some app developers at a misinformation conference in Washington DC. And we, yeah, we just started collaborating on a few other things. Uh and then um we we ran a crowdfunding campaign uh and raised enough funds to get the version one of the game developed.
It's just a small project after spending six months all done, writing a book, something like to follow on.
It's like, I think, um when Stephen King wrote, um like one of his books, like Christine or something, he finished it and then he just popped out this little short story, The Shawshank Redemption, just as a kind of a one of those kind of curious things about the cure, the creative process perhaps.
Right. It's quite hard to sort of get out of the uh the adrenaline rush as well, isn't it? I guess when you're frightened in the midst of it. And and the app is, it it's free and it's an, I guess, would you class it as an open educational resource or?
Absolutely. Um well, well, originally, when I launched the game, I was conceiving it as more just a a smartphone game that in the general public would play, like just individuals would download it through the App Store and play. But um when we immediately launched it, um like and we were collecting data inside the game to see how well the game improved critical thinking performance. The early adopters, the first people who played it, were all scoring like almost a perfect score at the start of the game. And which is great that those people have a high level of critical thinking. But from a researcher's point of view, well, there's a ceiling effect. I'm not going to get any improvement for those people. So they're useless to me from a research point of view. And they don't really need the game. They they're already performing very well. Um and uh it made me realize that, yeah, uh I I needed a way to um reach the people who were disengaged from the issue, who these were the people who needed uh a game like this more than the the hyper-engaged people. Uh and uh so in January, like a month after we launched the game, then we launched the teacher's guide to Cranky Uncle and provided a lot of educational um ideas on how you could use the game in the classroom. And once the classroom started using the game and we started getting data from students playing the game, that was that's when you got a much more um like people started in the middle of the line, like in the middle, a middle in kind of score and then and then we saw improvement after they got to the end of the game. So um uh it made me realize that probably where the game would have its biggest impact would be in the classroom as an educational resource.
Must be so thrilling when you see it, when you see that that um that feedback coming back, that feedback. Especially, again, just a a light, a light follow-on from all the other work. And so we've got some snapshots from the app. It'd be uh great, John, if you could talk us through what what's going on here and and what follows on.
So there's two elements to the game. The first element is Cranky Uncle explaining the techniques of denial. So he basically takes you through that flick taxonomy. The challenge of the flick taxonomy, that slide we saw earlier, is it's so big, there's so many different fallacies. How did people learn all that? Uh and so so Cranky Uncle walks you through each technique. We use analogies, those those parallel arguments to make them more concrete. Uh and he explains them from the point of view as of a Cranky Uncle mentoring you into becoming a Cranky Uncle yourself. So it's like, well, if you want to be a Cranky Uncle, then you want to cherry pick. If the data is against you, then pick the data that suits what you believe. It's it's kind of a dark humor kind of angle as a as a way of making the game more entertaining, humorous. Uh because the problem with serious games, as educational games are often called, is that label, serious, we, you know, you want to make them fun uh and entertaining if to motivate people to keep going through. So 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 that's the first element to um the game. The second element then is getting people to practice critical thinking. And the way we do that is through these quiz questions. So as each time you learn a new technique, then that unlocks a whole range of new quiz questions about that technique where you're shown examples of misinformation and you have to identify what is the denial technique in in that example. And and the point of that is And and the point of that is is getting people practising critical thinking. That Flick taxonomy is so big that it's it's an educational challenge to get people to internalise that deeply enough that they can spot these misleading techniques in the wild. But if you practise spotting them and you practise over and over and over again, that task gets quicker and easier to the point where it becomes a it's almost an instinctive thing, you can see false dichotomies and examples of fake experts much quicker and easier through practice. And that's really, I think, the the power of gamification in this context. Take a difficult thought process like critical thinking and practise it so much that it becomes a quick reaction rather than a long, difficult process.
Right, and I guess it's that development of those expert heuristics and the the outcome of slowing down your thinking and then going through this this practice process to get to the point where you're not making quick decisions because they're unthinking decisions that you've set up. I I guess a bit like when you're learning to drive a car or ride a bike, learn a new, speak a new language initially, you're labouring through trying to pick up a bits of grammar and increasingly, I guess, there's a an instinctiveness that kicks in.
Yeah, I guess it'll be equivalent to, I guess, if you are learning a language and that's what critical thinking is. It's like immersing yourself, trying to talk with people constantly. That's that's the best way to to learn it thoroughly.
And does the app have yet one element of learning strategies that we've been covering talking about spaced repetition and interleaving? I don't know if that's something that's within the sort of pedagogical puzzle or or something that is encouraged, this idea of keep, the way of oiling those wheels is to keep oiling them and come back after spaced intervals. Is that something that it tackles or you encourage in other ways?
Not in this first version one point O, it's a it's a fairly simple structure to the game. Ideally, that is what you want. Like, from the communication inoculation theory point of view, the way we think about that concept is booster shots, basically. Because you can inoculate people against misinformation, but then that the effect tends to fade over time. So you do need these regular booster shots to to maintain your immunity to misinformation. So ideally, what we will have in the game down the track is this some kind of system that gets people coming back to it. We're a bit away from that because we've kind of got several next steps of development. And none of those include anything like that yet. But I suspect that what we will, how we will achieve that is through contests, having regular contests where players compete against other players.
Okay, interesting. So bringing in sort of so social learning and another element of that, that games-based learning. And here, I guess, we can unpick some of these motivators that we were discussing before we kick-started our session this evening. And I was sharing with John my tussling between what happens with intrinsic motivators and extrinsic motivators and and well, over to you, John, because you you definitely got me rethinking.
Yeah, currently, the game is really an individual game. Well, not kind of, it is an individual game. You are playing by yourself and your motive for playing it, unless the teacher is making you do it, is is intrinsic. You're self-improving yourself, you're building your own immunity to misinformation, your own critical thinking. And like, we've got a lot of feedback from players who really appreciate that, like reporting, feeling more empowered and able to spot misinformation. One of my favourite comments was a student saying, I now know how to beat boomers. I thought that was kind of a classic kind of comment. But but intrinsic can only get you so far. Like, I think, I mean, obviously, extrinsic motives, like having to do it in a classroom, that's what we're finding is is where the game is having its biggest impact currently. But eventually, what we hope to do is build into the game player versus player contests, or even more powerfully, group versus group contests. Because when you have groups playing against other groups, you tap into one of the most powerful extrinsic motives of all, which is tribality or our social identity. I'm visualising like a classroom in Texas A and M competing against a classroom in Washington State, like or, you know, in in London, you know, it's like, it can be anywhere in the world. But and ideally, like, once we get translations going, and I'll come back to that later, it could be an English class in the US competing against a German class in Germany, both speaking in their own, playing the game in their own languages. But what that does is it takes a a really powerful, one of the most powerful human motives, which is our social identity. And that's often has a negative kind of impact on human behaviour and attitudes. And especially in climate change, where political affiliation is the biggest driver of climate denial, which political group we belong to, particularly in the US, it's not so much in in Europe and the UK. But that's what a game like this could do, especially when you have group versus group contest, is is harness social identity to motivate people to build their resilience against misinformation, which really flips that dynamic. Normally, social identity makes people more vulnerable to misinformation, but my hope is that we can actually reverse that.
That's fascinating. I'm just thinking, yeah, social identity is what I sort of circle around in my my previous research. And this, as you hear, this us versus them narrative, and normally that's a way of covering over, shall we say, a vulnerability by reinforcing a belief. And that's what's so interesting, if this were to sort of play out with future versions, is that you're trying to bring a meeting point because everyone's effectively trying to do the same thing rather than, I suppose, I guess, dig their dig their heels in. We're fast approaching our hour and I do want to open up the floor. But before we do so, to point to some of the the efficacy points and then the reach, John, and some next steps. So I will be the slide mover honourer, so please, over to you.
Yeah, very quickly, this we've built research into the game where when you play the game, the first thing is you're asked, do you want to participate in in some research? It's voluntary, of course, it has to be. But if they do agree, then they fill out this ten-question quiz at the start. If they get to the end, then they're invited to fill out the same quiz. And that's a very simple way of measuring, does their ability to spot misinformation techniques improve through playing the game? And we've we found that like our initial very preliminary analysis was that, yes, across almost all the fallacies, it does improve. And where it doesn't, then we can just refine the game content and try to improve that there. So so and the interesting thing is, these examples were all completely different topics as well. There's this climate, there's evolution, there's flat-earthism, there's just and it really speaks to that universal aspect of logic-based inoculation.
Yeah, and then the the reach, there's so many different elements of reach that the Cranky Uncle game's been achieving.
Yeah, so like for me, as a person developing messages, interventions to stop to counter climate misinformation, a challenge for me has been, I can design the perfect lab experiment, but how do I get that to those sort of kind of communities that are most vulnerable to misinformation, that are often in echo chambers and really hard to reach? And and eventually, I liked the classrooms again, where the solution to that problem, because teachers are crying out for interactive educational resources like digital games that engage their students but also teach content and critical thinking. And so I found that teachers were signing up to the game once we launched in January. Was it this January? Yes, it was this January. Goodness me, it's been a long year. And signing up in red states and blue states across the US, it's mostly been the US initially. I was in the US when we launched. But in all parts, like, I think we're in thirty-nine states in the US so far, so and a lot of conservative rural parts of the country. Obviously, lots more to do, and particularly overseas. The other thing, and I'll come back to translations in a moment. The other thing was, I was surprised at the age range. I was thinking, this is mostly an undergraduate game, maybe senior high school. So I was surprised when middle school and even some elementary or primary schools have been using the game as well. So the the age range is really broad. And I think that's partly because A, the cartoons and the colours make it attractive to to younger audiences. Also, because the game is just, every explanation has to fit into the speech bubble, it's incredibly concise. So it forces it to be short enough to be accessible to young people, while the concepts are also advanced enough that people just aren't learning critical thinking high school already or even at the undergraduate level. And so it's it's something that adults need. But we're still yet to collect data to kind of find out what is the threshold, the minimum age where the game kind of becomes a little bit too difficult. We don't have quite enough data to work that out yet.
So that's so interesting. I'm not I'm not surprised. I I need to show the book and the app to my my six-year-old niece. And I'm sure she'll, her eyes will light up straight away. And and just before we open up, if you've got the time, John, next steps in terms of translations, you were talking about moving the game into different geographies and and beyond the English-speaking world.
So version two of the game is going to be a multi-language version. And we're right in the middle of programming and well, we're in the middle of beta testing it right now. And the game has already been now fully translated into German and Dutch. Italian and Spanish are close to completion. And then there's about half a dozen other languages that are just at the beginnings of starting with just volunteers have come forward and offered to help. And so we're beta testing German and Dutch, which will be the first versions to come out, I'm hoping this year, but we're hitting a lot of challenges, not only technical challenges, but also translation challenges. Because there are certain things that just didn't translate, particularly the ambiguity fallacy. Ambiguity is a fallacy where a word can have multiple meanings. And that what might have multiple meanings in English might not translate in other languages. So it's required a bit of creativity from the translators to come up with appropriate versions in Dutch and German. I've also had to redraw some of the icons in these languages because Germans don't use the phrase cherry picking. They use the phrase raisin picking. So I have to draw an icon of a little hand and a little duck, so it's like picking out a raisin.
That's brilliant. That's, you know, that makes my ears prick up as a linguist. So we've taken quite a journey through all of the pedagogical underpinning, then the the genesis of Cranky Uncle and where you've got to already in, oh my goodness, in the space of three years, and we've had a pandemic and we still have a pandemic in in all of this. So to anyone who's joined us, John, I should check in with you, we are four minutes past the hour. Do you have time to take any questions or?
Yeah, sure.
That's superb. So at this point, what I will do is I'll I'll stop sharing and really encourage anyone who's joined us to ask any questions you might have of John's work or the Cranky Uncle in in particular or the journey it's been on. As you can imagine, I've got about twenty questions in front of me, but I won't I won't ask. I think I've had my prerogative. Or do feel free to pop in the chat if anyone would like to. Give a few moments for anyone to come forward. It's always this moment when you're looking out to see your faces, whether they're virtual or otherwise. Well, if there if there are to be burning questions right now, we we have recorded the session, so we will be releasing it on the course platform. And I will certainly collate any questions that anyone has and would like to feedback to John. And and John has kindly provided us with a code to go into the game, so you don't need to sign up. And so I'm sure any insights also, given we've got such a superb geographical span across the English-speaking world, any comeback on some of those cultural translations, I guess, as well would be super interesting to hear. Given that John's got a whole day's work ahead of him and Gabriella to nod, who's been very kindly in the background and it's definitely nearing pumpkin time for Gabriella over at Malta. So I I will close up shop now. So, John, thank you so much again. Well, firstly, for carving out time first thing in the morning in Australia, but much more broadly, as we're seeing in the chat here, for such important work and giving of it so generously with the with the app being open and open education resource, I'll be very avidly looking out for those those updates, et cetera. So thank you so much in in all in all senses of the word.
Yeah, thanks very much, Emma, for, well, for the chance to talk about the game. Very excited about it, so always appreciate the opportunity to to chat about it.
No, no, it's superb, John, thank you so much and all all very best wishes as you navigate all those, my goodness, all those linguistic challenges, my mind is just boggling. At how, especially ambiguities, I'll be so, yeah, it's so intriguing to see how those play out. Especially if you, I don't know if there's a French version in the works.
There is actually. It's really interesting because the French translators are based in, I think, three or four continents. We have one in Tunisia, one in France, one in Canada. I forget where the fourth one is, but yeah, that's. And then you have all these flavours of French. I kind of don't envy them because it could be a bit of a tug-of-war over exactly how each sentence is rendered.
Yeah, so, yeah, especially as what we were going, we were sort of circling round in terms of the concision and the difficulty of pinning down those examples. So it's hard enough in one language, I, yeah, my mind is just boggling on what it's going to look like in all the others. Thank you so much. Have a superb rest of your day. And as I say, we'll be avidly looking out for all the updates and we'll certainly pass them on to the community.
Great, thanks very much, Emma.
Thanks, John, all the very best and thank you to everyone else who's joined us. Have a great rest of your day.